At six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the board and welcome Gilson to Call of Road to establish corps.
Chairman Clennons.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marching.
Here. Brother Sam Hollis is here to do our invocation and our corner, Jermaine Kielpamp, is going to do our pledge of allegiance tonight.
Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in America. We thank you for our leaders and we pray that they will always be men of integrity and character and we pray they'd have your divine wisdom and guidance to lead. We know there are so many challenging issues that has to be dealt with and pray that they will be led and guided by you. While we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Resilience to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number three, approved minutes of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. In May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, special call meeting appropriations of spending years, personal actions, payroll requisitions, and prove all journal entries to be posted.
I make the motion we approve item three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? Number four, public comments and updates. Go ahead, man.
I'm Judy Sneed. I have it on my phone if I told up three minutes. So if I said, let's go feed the ducks, where am I going if I live in Coleman? We're going to Sportsman's Lake and that's what I'd like to talk about today. I'm Judy Sneed and I'm the owner of Sneed's Farmhouse. I'm a nonprofit educational petting farm. Our mission is to give back what's been given to us. I want to offer my services and time for the Sportsman's Lake injured ducks. I want to help. I will house the ducks and take care of them until they're able to return back to the lake. I approached Sportsman's Lake first and they were not responsive, so I'm coming to you. I've been on Fox Six News and Bama Buzz with written an article regarding Steve's Farmhouse raising the funds to rescue these ducks. I've raised thirteen hundred dollars at this point, but that's not enough. I need roughly four thousand dollars to get started. Twenty-seven hundred is for the rescue center and it will be named after Sportsman's Lake. Four hundred dollars is for a vet bill that I've already heard from them calling me to rescue the duck. Four hundred dollars is for the run and two hundred and fifty is for the medicine cabinet plus the vet deals for the animals. I'm asking for your help. I would like the commissioners to agree for me to do all the fundraising for Sportsman's Lake injured ducks. I would like to set up a booth at Sportsman's Lake to raise the funds and advertise on social media through the Sportsman's Lake Facebook page. I will do all the work in fundraising on the premises, pick up and return the ducks along with taking them to the vet and housing them until they are healed and able to return back to the lake. All I'm asking for you to do is for to agree for me to fundraise on their page and at the lake. We can either set up an account in Sportsman's Lake name and all the funds can go in there or I can do it all through my farm, which is a nonprofit five oh one C three farm. I'd rather the money go into y'all's account and then I bring you the receipts as the ducks go to the vet and so forth. Keep in mind that I've already rescued three of the ducks. Let me give you one example. Quacky Jacky was a hen that came to my farm. She was attacked by a duck on the leg from a duck, from a dog that was not on a leash. When she came to me, she was holding up one leg. I took her to the vet. She had gangrene set up in her leg and she spent three days in the vet and I had to have her leg amputated. But to turn that into something positive, Quacky Jack is now fixing to go into rehabilitation centers to encourage other amputees to not give up. That's just one example. I have a large following. I've been on Absolutely Alabama with Fred Hunter and I just hit the cover of the Alabama Living Magazine. Over five hundred people have visited my farm since January. Most of them are not even from Coleman. I'm bringing business to the Coleman area. I think that mutual partnership would be greatly beneficial to the Coleman County. Let me help you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to speak on public comments?
I just want to extend my appreciation to the commission as well as to everyone else who is here and we appreciate the thoughts and the plans and trying to work together in order to help with the transportation problem in Coleman County. I don't have anything else that I want to address at this time. I'll go back, get my ducks in a row and get my schedules to y'all and I'll be back.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I'm going to recognize two of our new commissioners here tonight. Corey Freeman will be working serving District Forward and then Kelly View will be serving District Three. Thank y'all so much for coming. And I think they take off, is it November the tenth, something, something?
First.
First, maybe, maybe the first one around the tent, I believe. Thank y'all for coming.
I'll be resigned first.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Lee Dodson. I was in a car accident when I was younger and I studied and found that there's a way for me to live on my own and a way for me to work on my own. I've been riding carts for twenty-five years and I would suggest that you have no way getting around. Just give the carts a call and let them take it from there. They send a bus when I ask them to and they're there at the time when I need to get out and it's just my right to us.
I've lived here ten years and I appreciate Cart's service and it's second to none. With this service come to my home, come to my house, help me get in the bus, take me out of it, make sure I get home, that's just second to none. And the drivers are phenomenal drivers. I've had nothing but great experience. Thank you, Cart.
I'm Daisy Yeager and I have been riding the cart since about ninety-seven and I've enjoyed it. The drivers are always courteous and some of them are very funny. But I've been doing rides with all of them there. They're nice, very faithful.
Thank you, Jillies, for letting me. I've got one more public update. Our July four celebration, this year will be July four, it'll be on a Monday. The celebration starts at nine P M. I want to thank the commission for voting on that this year to be free to all the citizens across government counties, Smith Lake Park, due to celebrating their fiftieth year anniversary of the park being open. So if you ain't got nothing to do that Monday, so come out and celebrate. We would love to have you. So thank y'all. We'll move on to new business. A recognition of Philip Bateman retiring after eighteen years of service with the road department. Come on up, Philip. Come on up. Get a picture in front of him.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations. No, y'all can do it.
Got to be a pretty good guy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? B, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one authorize the chairman to excel and offer financial assistance in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two twelve through the Recreation Trails Program, Project twenty-one R T dash fifty-five dash zero one for bridge replacement and tail and trail rehabilitation in Stony Alson, O H V Park and authorize the chairman to sign, start the bidding process.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as it says in here, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is the R T P grant that we got at the O H V Park in Stony Alson. This is just to authorize us to start the bidding process on those two bridges. One of them has already been destroyed and we're going to replace it. So they only have one way in and out of access into the park and then the other one would be replaced. I think if any specific questions about those bridges to Brian, but I think with cement being an issue right now and I think the earlier we get going on it, the better and we could maybe start, I think maybe Brian should shoot for maybe a little fall or something. It may have some, after we get paving and stuff done and stuff.
Yeah, the biggest thing is delivery of the actual bridge structures themselves, especially with all the delays in supply chain. I just wanted to try to get this way out of hand so we can be ready to construct and finish those bridges in the fall after we're completed with their paving season.
Are these will be very fast?
Yes, sir. They'll be built in modules, so all we've got to do is just put for the footings and the walls and then just set them on there.
And this is a full grain, I'm going to ask, is that correct?
Yeah, we had to separate both of them. We already got those two from the equipment. This is the actual bridges and some other rehabs of the trails they had down there. We're doing in time.
That's what I was going to say.
We're doing in time about our hours and some other things like that. That's right.
Yeah, make the motion approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? Thank you, Brad. C, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two award bid to Amerasil Corporation Incorporated for tax and way payment maintenance at the Cove and Ravens in the higher pole in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-five. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this was a bid that Goodwood Mills in Katewood actually lapped and they had reviewed the bids and the low bidder on this project was Amerasil and that they're recommending the city and the county would approve because of the general ownership.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion approve item C.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? D, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three library personnel inclusion and county payroll system. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a resolution that would bring the, currently we have some library employees that are under our personnel system, some that are not. Several years ago, the commission was trying to separate from different forwards and so that that move was made to not bring on any more library personnel. The way that the library was set up under the state law that it was set up under, legally we can't separate and create a separate entity there under the structure that it's under. So the existing library employees are not able to participate in RSA. This would bring them under our personnel system, allow them to participate in RSA. We already budgeted about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and they're having to pay for separate services outside to do payroll, employment tax and that sort of things. There'll be some savings from not having to do that. We'll, we'll no longer send them those funds. We're keeping them here in the house and there should be a pretty good offset for those services. The, the excess cost would be the retirement portion and then we'll bring them in our health insurance, but it's only two additional.
Yes, sir. That's how I know that too.
Yes, sir. There are several part-time that needs to stay below the nineteen hours. I appreciate you, John, for working RSA and all of this on this. I know you spend a lot of time. Thank you for your time. We have, anybody's worked on it. Library workers worked on it, so we appreciate all the, all the work.
Make the motion we approve item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? E, Public Carrying Carts Operations Forward F Y twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve up here.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jillies.
Cart's is doing an annual application for administrative operations with capital money through the section fifty-three eleven for federal monies assistant through the F T A for non-urbanized public transportation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. This will be the first year that we've not had CARES Act money to figure in our budget, so it hurts, but we knew it was going to go away at some point. Pre-COVID, we were providing around eight thousand trips a year. Right now, we're at thirty thousand a year and growing every day as we add stuff back. So hopefully we'll get back to eighty thousand and break it when we're filling it up. I'd like to open the floor at this time for discussion, questions from the gentlemen, the commissioners as well as the public. If there's no questions, then I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jillies.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? A, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-four authorize local matching funds for carts F Y twenty twenty-three and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Make the motion we approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? G, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-five authorize the file in fifty-three eleven grant application for carts and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item G.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? H, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six change speed limit to fifteen miles per hour on County Route seven thirteen.
Is this a dirt road?
Is that a dirt road? That's what I was interested in.
Yes, I believe so and it's also a very short dead end road and it's too narrow for anything above.
Is a skid road something to go down?
Not aware. I believe maybe some of the garbage trucks might actually go down that road.
Because you have the state office, skid roads, you have to drive five miles an hour to know what speed limit is.
But Alex, that's very short. It's, that probably went up to very far. The hell they can build up the speed, they can't even within five miles of fifteen, short as it is.
Make the motion we approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? I, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-seven post no crew trucks on County Route six twenty-three.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've recently resurfaced this roadway and as you know, County Roads seven fifteen and seven oh two are on the county transportation plan to approve those roads and what is going on here is there's a lot, as you know, there are a lot of significant amount of construction and new subdivision development over in that area and to prevent events and that traffic from using this road as a cut through, it's really not, it's not a significant improvement on that route for them to cut through there, but to decrease that amount of truck traffic from doing, causing early deterioration or damage to that roadway, I would definitely recommend approving this resolution to limit it to mostly passenger route. Also, there's a large amount of houses along that roadway. Definitely recommend approval of this resolution. I think it would be very beneficial to the public to limit this to only passenger or local residential deliveries.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? J, authorize the chairman to sign the Alabama Department of Youth Services Agency Grant Agreement for F Y twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight. That's a physical age of Lauderdale County. Jay, how you doing?
I'm good, thank you. I do appreciate your support. We already received four grants and we are prescribed to see for Lauderdale, Coleman, Blount and Jackson Counties and they're just changing that provider on this and so it still remains the same, the same monies.
Make the motion we approve item J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? K, authorize G M A director Tim Sartan to apply for a grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand with the Alabama Department of Public Health purchase supplies or equipment for the state mortuary operation response team and sign all related paperwork. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Tim Sartan asked me to speak on this. He is carrying a load of youth to youth camp, so I said, I would gladly do this instead of that. So this is the state mortuary response team grant. It's a hundred percent grant. We are sort of a central hub for that in North Alabama and it's something we've done every year and he's just asking for a quick one.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item K.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? A, authorize purchase of a blue remote operated vehicle, R O V three, C C C D C grant in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-six. Authorize the owner to sign all related paperwork.
So it's actually Blue River Blacks, Blue R V two is the name of it. It is a remote operated vehicle that is operated three hundred and thirty feet, comes with four hundred and ninety-foot of cable and has a three hundred and sixty-foot radio on, which is something that's definitely needed in the lake and it does have a signal function manipulating on. It's just one of the many tools that's needed to help facilitate underwater recovery and spill water. Like I said, it's eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. I received the grant from Triple C D C under policy of debit checking and general fund and shipping is actually eighty-eight dollars and four cents, which of the Alabama budget and just the dollars per week, it's over two thousand dollars.
Make the motion we approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? Jeremy, we truly appreciate what you did. I think you know that, so thank you. E, consider approval of advertising space and Smith Lake Park signs and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Mr. Chairman, this is an opportunity for anyone who wants to advertise on our Smith Lake Park signs. It's just a general contract. If you're most interested, they can enter into it and for a fee, they will be allowed to have a copy of the sign.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? E, consider appointing Commissioner Kieran Watson to the H C C Legislative Committee. Mr. Chairman, this is the annual legislative committee. Commissioner Watson volunteered to do this.
Make the motion we approve item E.
Yes, I'll second. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed, passed? O, consider approval of SABLA Safety Contract to provide C D L training to Cove and County employees and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Is it Berg?
Yes, John Berg, former informant, this is a contract for, it's basically online as well as it is and it will allow more opportunities for employees to have their C D Ls.
This is actually a meeting with the board.
And he's about got that system set up there, right? I can't stop, yes, what I'm talking about, yeah.
It's required now, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? P, consider the purchase of the twenty twenty-three Freightliner M two dash one oh six raffle truck with the road department in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven, forty-one and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, this is something we've been working on for a few months now. We finally got one that would fit our budget and fit our needs for our new roadside removal of trees called Electric Claw or whoever has to drop it.
Thank you for all your hard work on this. I appreciate it, Shane. We've been needing this a long time. You're right. Make the motion we approve item P.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? Q, consider authorization for Cove and Carrying for kids to use for education part of line to host a car show on November twelfth, twenty twenty-two from eight A M to three P.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? R, ratify payment of landfill charges for May twenty twenty-two cleanup program in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seventy-five, forty-three. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is related to the free day of the dump. That was approved in the past and the payment to the landfill for those is over ten thousand dollars, so it can be approved in this action.
That's not too bad for a whole one, three guys. You're the big one, right? Make the motion we approve item R.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? A, ratify signature on agreement sale previously approved, twenty nineteen kept. P, three ten million machine for the water department. Mr. Chairman, the commission already approved selling this and surplusing this. Shane was able to sell that and receive more than we actually were guaranteed, so we had, I don't remember the exact amount.
Two hundred and thirty.
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
Two hundred and thirty thousand is what the return on that was. But we need approval to sign that agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item S.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. T, ratifying solvents, errors, and taxes in litigation for 2021 and uncollected insolvents and taxes and litigation for previous years for Coleman County Revenue Office and authorize the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an annual event where there are insolvents, errors, things that people may not have paid on their property taxes, small amounts. And there's a forty-year file, and it just has to be approved every year.
I'll make most approve item T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. U, bid number thirteen ninety-five award bid option number two to Willoughby Roofing. She may report ready to complete the regroofing project for the 402 Arnold Street property in the amount of $131,400.
Mr. Chairman, this is Coleman County Office Building, also known as Board of Education. Who receives, I think, six bids. Will be one to bid, local contractors, and this will be a P B C new roof. It's a new product, I guess. They've used it, we just don't have a building. It's new to us, not them, which is.
Thank you, Shane.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item L.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. D, bid number thirteen ninety-seven award bid to Mitch Meachellade for 2024 size SUV for Pro Bay in the amount of $37,900.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this also should state that this fund, this is being paid for from the Pro Bay Judge's discretionary fund. But it had to be bid, and so this is to award the bid. And it will be a hundred percent paid from the Pro Bay Judge's discretionary fund. No general fund.
Make most approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? Aye. W, bid number thirteen ninety-eight award bid to C T S Softwear for dispatch software and first year annual maintenance and support for cars in the amount of $56,555,000.
You can thank.
You walked up here now.
This software will really be great. It will enable us to run more smoothly, more efficiently, and be able to keep up with everybody better. And it covers a lot of the billing. It just doesn't last. It's been great, see what you get.
Thank you, Joel.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item D.
This is not an annual contract for Mike or three things, just a person.
No, if we can, if we can cut it at any time, we can.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. X, bid number thirteen ninety-nine award bid to Terry's Slats Chevrolet for one or more fuel before crew cab trucks for the water department in the amount of $56,568.50.
Mr. Chairman, this will give us the ability to, this is one or more. They only had one available at the time. They have the possibility of getting up to two more. So this will give us the ability to go ahead and purchase those two when they come in instead of having to wait for them.
And we might get them by May, next year.
Maybe.
Is this half tons trucks?
I'm sorry?
Half tons?
These are four fifties.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah, yeah.
And also to add to that, the, these were the trucks that were already approved to buy them with the co-ops.
Yes.
And we couldn't get them yet.
Right.
November before we could get them. So we will cancel that if we can get these.
Make most approve item X.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Six, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, July nineteenth, 2022, at four P.M. in the Commission meeting room. Second, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, July nineteenth, 2022, six P.M. in the Commission meeting room. Can you give a motion to the chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.